I'll now call to order the City County Council meeting for Monday, March 18th, 2019, and we will begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Jackson.
I have a great honorable pastor here tonight, Pastor James Jackson, New Beginnings, who's gonna do my proxy prayer for me tonight, and he's a man of God, and he has a community heart for the people, so that's why I asked him to come and do my proxy prayer tonight. Pastor Jackson?
Let us pray. Our Lord, our God, how excellent is thy name in all the earth, for your word declares that even the government is upon your shoulders. We honor you, we give you glory, and we submit ourselves, even on this day, to you. We ask you now, that in the midst of this time of sharing, that it be productive, that it be fruitful, and that we will all leave this place better than the way we came. We submit ourselves to your wisdom and have your way like only you can in this place. And we'll be so careful to give you all the honor, glory, and the praise. In Jesus' name we declare it is so. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Bless you. Counselors, please select your green button to indicate your attendance. The next item on our agenda is introduction of guests and visitors. Counselor Feaster.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm hoping that my microphone is on, and I would like to recognize Pastor Tim Lindsay. We have two pastors in the audience tonight, and Pastor Lindsay has been gracious enough to come to Prayer Caucus that is held every council meeting for half an hour before caucus, and it is open to anyone. So, this is a recognition of Pastor Lindsay and also an invitation to the Prayer Caucus at five o'clock on April the 8th, which is the next one. Thank you.
Counselor Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize my Aspie Brothers and Sisters, Michael Torres and Georgia Cravy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, with this evening... Jack, Jackson.
All right, very good. Counsel Oliver, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. With this evening is the most distinguished person who brought up one of them, I mean from Cathedral High School, Mr. Barlow's here with his parents, teammates, and classmates. Would you please stand, please? Mr. Ken Barlow, and the rest of the family and friends, please stand. Thank you all for coming.
Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the esteemed honor to introduce tonight the new executive director for Martin Del Brightwell Community Development Corporation, and my friend, Amina Pearson. You stand up, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce a distinguished guest tonight, Mr. Evan Sheeran. He's a veteran of the U.S. Navy, a volunteer with the USO and the American Legion, as well as being a former Section Eight in public housing caseworker, living in Center Township, a very active resident in his community. Mr. Evan Sheeran.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize two esteemed educators and dear friends of mine, Associate Vice-Chancellor of RUPY, Dr. Carla Matata, and the Superintendent of Lawrence Township, another dear friend of mine, Dr. Sean Smith.
Thank you for allowing me to go again, Mr. President. I left out our friends, first responders, and I know Chief Malone is here tonight and any others. Would you please stand up and be recognized, first responders? And I know Pastor did the prayer tonight, but I'd like him to be recognized. Pastor James Jackson, New Beginnings Church, would you please stand and be recognized?
All right, the next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District councils will be held in the City County Building in the council chambers on Monday, March 18th, 2019, at seven o'clock PM. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Fap Osalee, President, City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the State of Indiana, I call to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Monday, March 4th, 2019, a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal number 140, 2019. Said hearing to be held on Monday, March 18th, 2019, at seven o'clock PM in the Public Assembly Room of the City County Building. Respectfully, Serita Hughes Clark of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the Clerk of the City County Council, Serita Hughes, the following ordinances. Fiscal ordinance number five, general ordinance numbers 11 through 18, special ordinance number one, general resolution numbers six through eight, special resolutions number three through six. Just a vague talks at mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have consent?
Consent.
The next item on our agenda is approval of journals for February the 25th, 2019. Do I have consent?
Consent.
Will now proceed to presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions, and the first item on our agenda is proposal number 158, introduced by all counselors, which honors Tamara Markie for her stunning accolade, being named the 2019 Indiana Teacher of the Year.
City County Council Special Resolution Number 7, 2019. A special resolution honoring Tamara L. Markie for her stunning accolade, being named the 2019 Indiana State Teacher of the Year. I think a little applause there would be appropriate. And whereas Tamara L. Markie lives in Indianapolis with her husband Maurice, their three children, and Golden Doodle, her path to becoming a teacher was... I can never say that word. Hey, you're a teacher. How do you pronounce that word right there?
I don't have my readers on, but...
Circuitous. Circuitous. Thank you. After graduating from Purdue University with a BS in Industrial Engineering and a Master's in Engineering Technology, she worked in the oil industry and was a stay-at-home mom before her life-changing decision to study education through a Woodrow Wilson Teaching Fellow Program and...
Whereas Ms. Markie began her teaching career at Fall Creek Valley Middle School in Metropolitan School District of Lawrence Township, Markie, who teaches high school pre-engineering at McKenzie Center for Innovation and Technology... Side note, my son's favorite teacher last year.
John Coats?
Yes.
Has led an effort to encourage girls to study science, technology, engineering, and math. The program connects middle school girls with mentors from the community in engineering and technology fields, and whereas just a few short years into her teaching career, she won a stunning accolade... Let's go ahead and do it again. Being named the 2019 Indiana Teacher of the Year, Tamara is quoted as saying, "This is truly an honor to be able to represent all of the teachers and educators in the state of Indiana. This is the best job that anyone could have. It is such a privilege, truly a privilege, to be an educator." As Indiana Teacher of the Year, she will be considered for National Teacher of the Year. You're a shoo-in. Whereas Tamara L. Markie is an MSD Lawrence Township Design Excellence Co. Award winner, project lead-the-way instructor, founder, and advisor of Girls in Technology, a program designed to increase exposure and interest of middle school girls in engineering and technology, member of the district's STEM Coalition Task Force, faculty advisor for the Architecture, Construction, and Engineering mentoring program, and a member of the Graduation Pathway Committee. Now therefore, be it resolved...
Be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County. Section one, the Indianapolis City County Council recognizes Tamara L. Markie for her stunning accolade and being named the 2019 Teacher of the Year. Section two, the City County Council recognizes the hard work, dedication, and achievements of Tamara L. Markie. Section three, the mayor is invited to join this resolution by fixing his signature here too. Section four, this resolution shall be in full force and effective upon adoption and compliance with Indiana Code 3634414, and this special resolution, sponsored by Counselors McCullin and Coats, be passed by the City County Council this 18th day of March, 2019. And, Mr. President, I so move.
Motion is properly moved and seconded. Back to the speaker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Back to the speaker.
We, in addition to Tamara, have a distinguished panel with us today. Dr. Sean Smith, Superintendent of Lawrence Township Schools, who... Thank you, Counsel Robinson, but he's in Lawrence Township now. We stole him away from you. Anyway, moving right along. Mr. Tim Harshbarger, who's the Chief Human Resource Officer, Ms. Mari Swain, Director of the McKenzie Center of Innovation and Technology, Mr. Reginald McGregor, President of the Lawrence Township School Board, and Dr. Dana Altmeier, Director of the Public Relations and Marketing. And, Mr. President, with your permission, I would like to have Dr. Smith say just a word.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. McCullin. Thank you, Mr. President and counsel. It's an honor to be here. I am joined with Tamara Markie, who is one of seventy-five thousand teachers in the state of Indiana, and she is the Teacher of the Year for the entire state and from Indianapolis. So, we need to celebrate that. And so, I will keep it very briefly, but on behalf of the Board of Education, the entire faculty and staff of Lawrence Township, it's an honor to be here to honor this great lady. It is about her and what she does in the classroom for all students. She's a very, very special classroom teacher, and we certainly appreciate you taking note of this honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. And before I introduce the woman of the moment, a couple of quick things I'd like to say. I was fortunate to be invited when the surprise announcement was made, and she walked into a room full of adoring students, family members, and people who came together clutching her day planner, which they had to wrench out of her fingers because the ever-prepared teacher did not want to let it go when she got up there to do her thing, always doing what needs to be done. Second story, we had our Lawrence Township Foundation event to raise money for the special programs and things. This lady, this teacher, not only attended and helped to raise money, she donned a superwoman outfit, a superhero outfit, and actually had a fan... Could you please... Could you indulge me? Show them the superwoman pose, please. Go ahead. The super teacher pose. This is what we have in Lawrence Township. Mr. President, with your permission, Tamara Markie.
Thank you so much. It is such a privilege to be recognized here this evening, and I truly thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule for that recognition. I just represent all the teachers in the state, and we simply do heartfelt work, our passion, and that is to deliver quality education to our students. I pray that I can do this platform justice over the next year in pushing forward the platform of equity for all students throughout our entire state. But I do thank you so much for honoring me this evening. This is truly beyond anything that I could have ever imagined. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a copy for you, Dr. Smith. This is a copy for you. And he's got some kids for you, too.
Thank you so much. Please help jump in. I'll see you.
The next item on our agenda is proposal 159, which honors Ken Barlow, Matt Gaddis, and Wayne Pack for their induction into the 2019 Indiana Basketball Hall of Fame.
We didn't play sports, did we? You're doing Barlow's. You're doing... Steve first.
Mr. President, this evening, I have the honor and the privilege, and it is a privilege, to recognize and acknowledge three great individuals that are going into the Indiana Basketball Hall of Fame. That is Mr. Ken Barlow, Mr. Matt Gaddis, and Mr. Wayne Pack. Now, what we have written here is a little biopsy about them on the court, but these three individuals were giants of men off the court, and we'll hear a little bit about that later on. But I want to recognize and acknowledge that, yes, they're going to Indiana Basketball Hall of Fame of what they did on the court. That the twenty-five-year wait after their class graduated from high school, only twenty-five years later are they eligible to even be considered. So, there's a measurement of lifestyle on what they've given to our community in that period of time, goes along with how many points they scored. This is very important to all of us, that not only the Hall of Famers on the court, but off the court. We'll begin... Mr. Matt Gaddis and Mr. Wayne Pack are not with us this evening, but Mr. Barlow is, and we want to thank him for sharing his time with us on a busy schedule because the demand for those that are going into the Indiana Basketball Hall of Fame are great this week. So, I want to give a special thank you for coming out with us this evening. We'll begin by the narrative here on Mr. Ken Barlow. Mr. Leroy Robinson, please.
Thank you, Counsel Oliver. This is a special resolution honoring Ken Barlow, Matt Gaddis, and Wayne Pack for their introduction into the 2019 Indiana Basketball Hall of Fame. Whereas Ken Barlow earned the 1982 Indiana All-Star in high school All-American honors following career at Cathedral High School, thus saw him set a record in block shots and field goal percentages and graduate third in career scoring and second in rebounds. He averaged nineteen points per game and eleven rebounds as a junior during all city and all state honors and averaged eighteen points and nine rebounds a game as a senior, helping Cathedral to a best-ever 27-3 season. His record-setting career at the University of Notre Dame included a school record of one hundred and twenty games played, along with one thirteen-hundred games in his school career. A two-time MVP and two-time team captain, he earned honorable mention in All-American accolades and was twenty-third pick of the first round of the 1986 NBA draft. Two thousand and sixteen seasons as a professional basketball player in Europe, he was a member of teams winning twelve championships. Additionally, his jersey was retired in the Greek and Italian basketball leagues. Ken currently serves as the Vice President of Community Relations and Diversity at Cathedral High School as a minister at a local church in Indianapolis. He was married, has two sons who both play college basketball, and whereas...
Now, Mr. Addison, please. Mr. Matt Gaddis, thank you.
It's the same as here. Matt Gaddis, a nineteen eighty... I gotta read this real good. A nineteen eighty-six alumni paralyzed as a record-breaking career at Pike High School in the history of... At Purdue University. In nineteen eighty-two, Indiana All-Stars after setting school records of two hundred and ninety career assists, two hundred and sixty-eight steals, along with one thousand one hundred and eighty-one points. Gaddis averaged twenty-one point four per his junior year, twenty-five point one points as a senior under the Hall of Fame Coach Ed Segal. Earning all state honors both years, as a senior, he earned the Marion County Player of the Year and Conference Player of the Year honor. Under the Hall of Fame Coach Gene Katie at Purdue, he led the baller makers in assists as a junior and senior, graduating in the fifth-year program history with one hundred and seventy-eight assists as a senior. He was the first player in the program history to play on a team to win twenty-plus games for a four-season and played in four NC2A tournaments. He was a sophomore member of the nineteen eighty-four Big Ten Champion Squad that reached as high as ten, tenth in the national polls. Professionally, he has been employed with the State Farm Insurance, and he resides in Noberville.
Thank you, Mr. Addison. Now, Mr. Garrett, would you please come forward and read it?
Thank you, Counsel Oliver. A football player myself, the only basketball I've ever thrown was a brick, so happy to honor this gentleman, though. Whereas Wayne Pack was a member of the undefeated state championship Washington Continentals of nineteen sixty-nine, Wayne was cut from the team as a freshman, sophomore, and junior before becoming a senior starter for Hall of Fame Coach Bill Green on the nineteen sixty-eight-sixty-nine team, playing alongside Indy star, Mr. Basketball, George McGinnis, and Indiana All-Star, Steve Downing. Pack averaged nine point nine points and four assists for the team that finished thirty-one and zero in the season. Following his short but impressive high school career, Wayne went on to start at Tennessee Tech, one thousand two hundred and twenty-three points, and set a school record with four hundred and twenty-two assists. Along with the single-game assist record of sixteen, he is a member of the Tennessee Tech University Sports Hall of Fame Class 1996. Wayne was the eighteenth overall selection in the American Basketball Association, ABA, draft by the San Diego Conquistadors. He went on to play professionally for the Indiana Pacers in nineteen seventy-four and seventy-five, and in Spain in seventy-five with the Iberia Superstars. Did I get that right? Following his professional basketball career, Pack embarked on a successful business career in human resources with multiple companies. He currently serves as the Senior Vice President and Chief Human Resources Officer with Community Health Network and resides in Indianapolis.
Where'd you finish that at? Which, right here? Yes, sir. Be reserved by the City County Council, the City of Indianapolis, Marion County, Indiana. Section one, the Indianapolis City County Council recognizes Ken Barlow, Matt Gaddis, and Wayne Pack for their induction into the Indiana Basketball Hall of Fame. Section two, the council heartily congratulates Indiana's own athletes and wishes them success in all future endeavors. Section three, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by fixing his signature here too. Section four, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-4-14. This special resolution was sponsored by myself and hopefully passed by the full council. Mr. President, I so move for its adoption.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I would like to say a whole lot about the twenty-five years after they finished their high school career. I will speak a little bit about myself, about Mr. Matt Gaddis and Mr. Wayne Pack, who are not here, but let me tell you, I've known Mr. Pack over the years. I didn't know him in his high school years, but I certainly heard of him and seen some of his work on the West Side, at the Boys Club down West Sixteenth Street. He worked with the young men there. Mr. Matt Gaddis, I don't know if I want to hear the speaker in his behalf, but we certainly are going to hear about those that are here, the speaker, Mr. Ken Barlow. Certainly, would someone please come forward, please? Right here. What's your name, sir?
Eric Crockett.
Give it to him.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I've known Kenneth just about my entire life, and one of the things that immediately came to mind when I was asked to speak a few short words on his behalf was the theme of sponsorship. All around the world, starting here in Indianapolis and going to Italy, going to Greece, going across the world, Ken has been a sponsor of goodness, hard work, success, ultimate performance, and squeezing every bit of juice that you can out of the God-given gifts and talents that he possesses. And in a tall package like that, there's quite a bit to give. A short story, I had gone back to Ball State to get a second degree, hoping that I would get into law school, and so I was just about to graduate, and I'd gotten my second degree in French, and so I called Kenneth, and I was like, hey, this French thing kind of worked out really well. I was thinking about going across to France, maybe getting a master's degree, and he said, Eric, stop right there. He said, if you go to France and you get a master's degree, you'll always want to go to law school. So, after taking the bar, passing the bar, and practicing for ten and a half years, I think you made the right decision. Thanks, Ken. You've been an incredible sponsor of mine and millions of others across the world. The Indiana Basketball Hall of Fame should be honored to welcome a member like Ken Barlow to its doors. Thank you.
My name's Dave Worland, and I'm fortunate to serve as the principal of Cathedral High School, and I get to work with this young man here to my right, and his title is the Vice President for Constituent Relations and Diversity. So, that's a lot, but he is the best role model we have in our school. We've got a hundred and fifty-five adults that work in our school, and we've got twelve-hundred students, and I think most of you know that right now, the teenagers, we get students fourteen to eighteen, and that's an age group that's at risk a lot of times for a lot of our schools throughout our country, not just here. But if you walk down our hallways, you'd think Mr. Barlow maybe is going to be in meetings all the time, and he's working on a lot of high-powered things, which he does. He's a professional, and he does everything well, but he's got students constantly flowing into his office, freshmen, sophomores, males, females, seniors, juniors. He cares about kids, and the students know he cares about them because he will never leave one second without giving them his time. And we all know time is important, and that's what we have as value, but he comes every day. He comes early, he stays late. He's a man of faith. He also is a man of God, and he teaches those priorities to our students, and we are a school that prides itself on family, so there's nobody that's not part of Ken Barlow's family at Cathedral or beyond. So, as one of the hundred and fifty-five of us that work beside him throughout every day, we're proud, we're honored, we're thrilled that he's going to be inducted into the Indiana Basketball Hall of Fame on Wednesday, but we're actually prouder of the fact that he is a role model and he cares about everybody he talks to. So, thank you very much, Mr. Barlow.
That's off the court, folks. Now, on the court and off the court, Mr. Ken Barlow, please.
To God be the glory through whom all blessings flow. It is just an honor and a privilege to be before the council. I want to thank the council for this awesome opportunity just to present myself to you. Thank you to Councilman Oliver for inviting me this evening. Thank all my family and friends, Cathedral High School, my relatives who are here this evening. Thank my lovely wife who supports me in all that I do. I'm just so humbled. I'm so thankful to even have my parents here, who have been a great inspiration to me in all the things that I do. The best they always ask me to do was to give my best, and that's all I ever tried to do on the court and off the court, is to give my best to everyone, and I thank them for showing me perseverance and dignity and integrity, and having been married for fifty-nine years, which is a testimony within itself, taught me a whole lot. So, I'm just very thankful. And I want to thank the council just once again for having me this evening, so thank you very much.
Thank you. God bless you.
Yes. Thank you. God bless you. All right. Nice to meet you, sir.
Yes.
This is an exciting occasion, but I do have to...
Counsel Adamson?
I'm sorry.
All right. Next item on our agenda, is proposal number 160. Counsel Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. My apologies. One of the greatest gifts that we have here is to be able to recognize outstanding contributions in our city, but I do have to admit that there is deception afoot. And we are here not just to recognize outstanding contributions to the city of Indianapolis, but to recognize an outstanding individual here in Indianapolis. And so, I know this is going to come as a surprise to her, but it will not come as a surprise to anyone who knows her. So with that, I would like to read a special resolution recognizing Taisha Harding Sellers. Whereas... Whereas Taisha has a Bachelor of Arts in Public Relations, a BA in Russian Studies from Bradley University, and a Master's Degree in Medical Sociology focusing on social determinants of health disparities and mental health and illness from Indiana University. Whereas Taisha returned to the Near East Side of Indianapolis to rebuild the community in which she was born and raised, and whereas...
And whereas, since 2008, Taisha has served as President and Chief Executive Officer, CEO of the Edna Martin Christian Center and EMCC Holdings LLC, which is an organization located in the Martindale-Brightwood community. The organization impacts the lives of approximately 3,000 people by staying true to its mission of encouraging, empowering, and engendering a vision of hope for residents through programs, services, and community development. And whereas, Taisha has worked with the EMCC team as well as collective impact partners to provide transformational opportunities that result in residents increasing their education, increasing their income, and developing a healthier community, and...
Whereas, for years, Taisha has worked to improve the community through her business endeavors, volunteerism, social issue-focused workshops and teaching. She has served as an educator teaching gerontology, health promotion, social justice and law, and sociology for colleges including Franklin College, Strater University, Ivy Tech Community College Columbus, and various health agencies. She's been recognized for her efforts with many honors, including but not limited to receiving the Indiana Minority Business Magazine Champion of Diversity Award in 2019, the Indiana University Purdue University I U P Y Community Leadership Award in 2016, and Key to the City of Indianapolis in 2000, I'm sorry, in 1991. And whereas, Taisha is the proud mother of two daughters, Gabrielle and Anna's stepson, Raphael, and wife to Jeffrey Sellers. The Sellers are members of North United Methodist Church in Indianapolis. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, section one, the City County Council proudly recognizes Taisha Harding Sellers for her devout love and care for the residents of Indianapolis. Section two, the City County Council heartily thanks Taisha for her dedicated service and commitment to the Martindale-Brightwood community and the city of Indianapolis. Section three, the mayor is invited to join this resolution by affixing his signature here too, which he has done, and this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with I C 36-3-4-14, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, it is such an honor, again, to be here to recognize Taisha for this resolution. She is really a driving force for much of what happens in the Martindale-Brightwood community, and we need all the help we can get working in the community there. So I'd like to turn it over to Gina Lewis Alexander, who I know works very closely with Taisha. Where did she go? There she is, there. Just say a few words.
Good evening, council. Thank you so much for this opportunity that we can honor our self-esteem colleague, Taisha Harding Sellers. We are so proud in the Martindale-Brightwood area that we have a distinguished young lady who is leading us to the next frontier. As you know, Martindale-Brightwood sits right at the heart of the city of Indianapolis, and we are so happy that she is there to encourage us, to educate us onto all of the collective impacts and strategies and initiatives that we can go forward. So again, I thank you for this opportunity. I am proud to be her colleague and her friend, and from Martindale-Brightwood, come see us. We're on the move.
Yes, yes. And now, I would like to introduce the woman we are all speaking of, whose fingerprints are on every good thing that go on in the Martindale-Brightwood community. Taisha, if you please.
This is such, thank you. This is such a tremendous honor. I want to thank you all for this recognition. This to me means so much because being born and raised in Martindale-Brightwood, a wonderful community that has so many assets, so many wonderful people, it has a commitment from all the people in order to make sure that every person within that area has the best quality of life. To be a part of that, to continue to be a part of the improvement in Martindale-Brightwood really means so much to me. And seeing everyone here who is a part of that, thank you all for your investment in this community and making it the best it can be. Thank you, in terms of the council of recognizing Martindale-Brightwood as an area that's on the move, we will continue to work hard to improve the area for every last person within it. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Here. All right, and...
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 161, which declares April the 2nd through the 6th, 2019, as American Pianist Week in Indianapolis.
Whereas, the mission of the American Pianist Association is to discover, promote, and advance the careers of young American world-class jazz and classical pianists to celebrate the beauty of music through Americans' premier jazz and classical awards. And whereas...
The American Pianists Awards are held in Indianapolis, Indiana every two years to discover the best aspiring young American jazz or classical pianists. These unique and innovative competitions span 13 months and provide a platform to deeply engage musical artists in a variety of creative formats and settings. And whereas, this year's competition features five finalists: Kenny Banks Jr., Emmett Cohen, Keon Dimmick, Dave Minter, and Billy Test, one of whom will win the largest prize in the world for a jazz musician at the Hilbert Circle Theater on April 6, 2019, and...
Whereas, the winner of the 2019 American Pianist Award will be the Cole Porter Fellow in Jazz and the Artist in Residence at the University of Indianapolis for two years. And whereas, the American Pianist Association is led by Dr. Joel Harrison and Board of Directors composed of Indianapolis-area business, philanthropic, and community leaders, with support from the Indianapolis City County Council through generous grants from the Arts Council of Indianapolis and gifts from many central Indiana foundations, businesses, and individuals. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana, section one, the City of Indianapolis City County Council proudly declares April 2nd through 6th, 2019, American Pianist Week in Indianapolis. Section two, the Indianapolis City Council welcomes this year's American Pianist Award finalist and congratulates each of them on their accomplishments. Section three, the mayor is invited to join this resolution by affixing his signature here too. And section four, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon compliance with I C 36-3-14, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to speak on behalf of this exciting event, Mr. Joel Harrison.
Thank you. Mr. President and council, thanks so much for this lovely honor, and thank you so much for the support that you as our city council offer to all the arts in this city. We are a lively bunch, I can tell you, and we are so grateful for the support from the city. We at American Pianist Association benefit from that support from you and from the many donors and the corporations and foundations that are in this city. The award is valued at over $100,000 to the winner. It includes a recording contract on a major label. You heard earlier that the winner will be named the Artist in Residence for two years at the University of Indianapolis. We manage the winner for two years at concerts worldwide. That brings in another value of several hundred thousand dollars through the fees that are paid to them. And the person, the winner, also gets public relations through our organization and through D L Music Media of Philadelphia. The other, I hate to say, non-winning finalist, those who are not named the fellow, also receive great awards, $20,000 each. The awards to our finalists are larger than any other winning award in jazz in the world, and it's happening right here, thanks to the support from those of you in the room. Thank you for this wonderful honor.
These are your candidates here.
Thank you so much.
And now, the Center for Working Families and AARP members?
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 162, calling for the rejection of Senate Bill 613.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a special resolution calling for the rejection of Indiana Senate Bill 613. Whereas, we in Indianapolis strive to be a place where all residents, no matter what we look like or where we come from, can live, work, and raise a family without the drain of financial insecurity. And whereas...
Whereas, communities of color and low-income families in our city have historically suffered and continue to suffer from discriminatory and abusive financial services, service practices that strip wealth and make it impossible to achieve a secure financial footing. And whereas...
Whereas, Marion County is home to 60 payday loan storefronts that in 2018 drained more than $12.5 million in fees from working families and checking accounts. And...
Whereas, these lenders make loans at absorbent rates to borrowers who can least afford them, taking direct access to their checking accounts as collateral and loan, and spurring a cycle of reborrowing that leads many in delinquency, default, and bankruptcy. And whereas, Senate Bill 613 would not only expand what payday lenders can offer, allowing them to make much larger and longer-term loans to even lower-income borrowers, but it will also increase rates and fees subprime auto lenders and authorize additional new predatory loan models in our state. And whereas...
Whereas, Senate Bill 613 changes the definition of criminal loan sharking, which is currently a felony, and provides strong protection against unscrupulous lending. And whereas, the issue of credit access and banking deserts and predatory lending has been suggested but studied by our own legislature. Now here therefore...
Be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, section one, the City County Council calls upon the Indiana General Assembly and the Governor of Indiana to reject Senate Bill 613. Section two, the City County Council urges the Indiana General Assembly to engage in a study of the needs of low-income borrowers and communities of color in Indianapolis with respect to credit access and lending practices. Section three, the City County Council encourages the City of Indianapolis to engage in the exploration of safe, productive alternatives to payday and other forms of usurious subprime lending that drains resources from the Indianapolis families. Section four, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature here too. And section five, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with I C 36-3-14, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to speak on behalf of this exciting event, Mr. Joel Harrison.
Thank you. Mr. President and council, thanks so much for this lovely honor, and thank you so much for the support that you as our city council offer to all the arts in this city. We are a lively bunch, I can tell you, and we are so grateful for the support from the city. We at American Pianist Association benefit from that support from you and from the many donors and the corporations and foundations that are in this city. The award is valued at over $100,000 to the winner. It includes a recording contract on a major label. You heard earlier that the winner will be named the Artist in Residence for two years at the University of Indianapolis. We manage the winner for two years at concerts worldwide. That brings in another value of several hundred thousand dollars through the fees that are paid to them. And the person, the winner, also gets public relations through our organization and through D L Music Media of Philadelphia. The other, I hate to say, non-winning finalist, those who are not named the fellow, also receive great awards, $20,000 each. The awards to our finalists are larger than any other winning award in jazz in the world, and it's happening right here, thanks to the support from those of you in the room. Thank you for this wonderful honor.
These are your candidates here.
Thank you so much.
And now, the Center for Working Families and AARP members?
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 162, calling for the rejection of Senate Bill 613.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a special resolution calling for the rejection of Indiana Senate Bill 613. Whereas, we in Indianapolis strive to be a place where all residents, no matter what we look like or where we come from, can live, work, and raise a family without the drain of financial insecurity. And whereas...
Whereas, communities of color and low-income families in our city have historically suffered and continue to suffer from discriminatory and abusive financial services, service practices that strip wealth and make it impossible to achieve a secure financial footing. And whereas...
Whereas, Marion County is home to 60 payday loan storefronts that in 2018 drained more than $12.5 million in fees from working families and checking accounts. And...
Whereas, these lenders make loans at absorbent rates to borrowers who can least afford them, taking direct access to their checking accounts as collateral and loan, and spurring a cycle of re-borrowing that leads many in delinquency, default, and bankruptcy. And whereas, Senate Bill 613 would not only expand what payday lenders can offer, allowing them to make much larger and longer-term loans to even lower-income borrowers, but it will also increase rates and fees subprime auto lenders and authorize additional new predatory loan models in our state. And whereas...
Whereas, Senate Bill 613 changes the definition of criminal loan sharking, which is currently a felony, and provides strong protection against unscrupulous lending. And whereas, the issue of credit access and banking deserts and predatory lending has been suggested but studied by our own legislature. Now here therefore...
Be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, section one, the City County Council calls upon the Indiana General Assembly and the Governor of Indiana to reject Senate Bill 613. Section two, the City County Council urges the Indiana General Assembly to engage in a study of the needs of low-income borrowers and communities of color in Indianapolis with respect to credit access and lending practices. Section three, the City County Council encourages the City of Indianapolis to engage in the exploration of safe, productive alternatives to payday and other forms of usurious subprime lending that drains resources from the Indianapolis families. Section four, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature, which he has done. And section five, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with I C 36-3-4-14, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two persons here who are wanting to speak, a member of the Center for Working Families and someone from the, who I'm sure most of us already know, from the AARP.
Hi, thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. I'm actually Kathleen Laura. Robin Peter to pay Paul, they never have enough money to get out of the hole. As soon as this one's due, they have another one due at the end of the week. And all their extra money, or any money that they have in common, goes to these loans. They can never do anything with their families because they're constantly, constantly paying these loans. Look it up if you have the chance, counselors. I urge you to do that.
Thank you. And I do want to make a point, there was an omission. Counselor Christine Scales was a early co-sponsor for this, and her name was inadvertently left off there. She very early signed on to support this as well. So, thank you all.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 101, refer to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I want to take proposal 101 and 102 together.
Consent.
Consent. Proposal 101, appoint Danielle Coulter to the City-County Audit Committee. It came out of committee eight to zero. Proposal 102, reappoint Lakeisha Jackson to the City-County Audit Committee, and it came out nine to zero. So move.
Second.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? All right. Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 25 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 103, refer to Administration and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I want to take proposal 103, 104, 105, 106, and 107, and I so move.
Consent.
Okay. Proposal 103, approve the appointment, mayor's appointment of Thomas Cook as the chief deputy mayor. It came out of committee nine to zero. 104, appoints the mayor, appointment of Jeff Bennett as the deputy mayor for community development. It was a nine-zero pass. Proposal 105, mayor's appointment of Angela Smith-Jones as the deputy mayor for economic development. It passed nine to zero. Proposal 106, appoint, mayor's appointment of David Hamilton as a deputy for neighborhood engagement. It passed nine to zero. And finally, the proposal 107, mayor's appointment of Hope Tribble as the director of the Office of Audit and Performance, and I so move, and it passed eight to zero.
Second.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Counselor McCullough.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Simpson, I missed. Could you tell me again what the vote was on Thomas Cook? I think that was proposal number 103.
Well, he's here. He's here, and I was going to invite him up to give a speech, but he refused. So, at this point, I think it was zero to eight, or eight to zero. I couldn't figure out which way it went.
Thank you, counselor.
Okay, you're welcome.
Counselor Jackson.
I want to come to the front. He responded to my text today.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
You did that before the vote. Come on down. Give us a brief update of why we should reappoint you.
Thomas Cook, I currently serve as the chief of staff, Mayor Joe Hogg said, and I did receive your message a short time ago. I have not responded. I am planning to do that right now, as I sit here. And I can say, having read it just a moment ago, it will be a positive response. And any other questions?
Thank you, sir. Honored to have you back.
Mr. President, one other note is that I think that all these reappointments, especially the mayor's appointment of all the deputy mayors, and they've done an excellent job. I think that they have shown that these neighborhoods can be dealt with, and there are some positive things coming from the chief, all the way down to Hope Tribble, Reverend Hamilton, Angela Smith-Jones, Jeff Bennett. I just want to say to all of them, thank you for what you've done for us this year, and hopefully this year coming will be even better. Thank you.
So, the motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there any additional comments from counselors? All right. Seeing none, we'll go to the board for our vote. Motion carries 25 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 86, refer to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 86 appoints Charles Johnson to the Indianapolis Housing Agency Board of Directors. Counselor Adamson moved and seconded by Counselor Robinson to amend proposal number 86, which removes Charles Johnson and adds Esther Carter Day as, and that motion carried by a vote to 11 to zero. Ms. Carter appeared before the committee on Monday, March 11, 2019, to seek appointment and answer questions. The proposal passed by a vote of 11 to zero, as amended. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? All right. Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 25 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 34, refer to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 34 reappoints Roger Bohannon to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division 2. The motion carried by a vote 11 to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 25 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 108, refer to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposals number 108, 109, and 110 together.
Consent.
Thank you. Proposal number 108, reappoints Alpha Blackburn to the Metropolitan Development Commission. Proposal number 109, reappoints Lena Hackett to the Metropolitan Development Commission. Proposal number 110, reappoints William Sim to the Metropolitan Development Commission. Ms. Blackburn, Ms. Hackett, and Mr. Sim appeared before the committee on Monday, March 11, 2019, to seek reappointment and answer questions. Counselor Jackson moved and seconded by Counselor Adamson to send proposals number 108, 109, and 110 to the full council, with a due pass recommendation, the motion carried by a vote of 11 to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 25 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 113, refer to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 113 approves the mayor's appointment of Emily Mack as the director of the Department of Metropolitan Development. Ms. Mack appeared before the committee on Monday, March 11, 2019, to seek reappointment and answer questions. Counselor Jackson moved and is seconded by Counselor Fanning to send proposal number 113 to the full council, with a due pass recommendation, the motion carried by a vote of 11 to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 22 to 3. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 114, refer to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 114 approves the mayor's appointment of Brian Madison as the director of Department of Business and Neighborhood Services, BNS. Mr. Madison appeared before the committee on Monday, March 11, 2019, to seek reappointment and answer questions. Counselor Adamson moved and is seconded by Counselor Holliday to send proposal number 114 to the full council, with a due pass recommendation, the motion carried by a vote of 11 to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? All right. Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 25 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 118, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chairman Evans will take over the minutes for this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
And feel free to lump all of your appointments together.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Robinson. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I would, with consent, like to take proposals number 118, 119, 121, 122, 123, together.
Consent.
Thank you. Proposal number 118, reappoints Chris Duzenberry to the Early Intervention Planning Council. Proposal number 119, reappoints Mr. Blake Johnson to the Early Intervention Planning Council. Proposal number 121, reappoints Michael Bryant to the Citizens Police Complaint Board. Proposal number 122, appoints Shane Foley to the Citizens Police Complaint Board. Proposal number 123, reappoints Dwayne Ingram to the Citizens Police Complaint Board. Mr. President, all proposals passed with a nine-zero vote. And I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Counselor Feaster.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to withdraw proposal number 120, please.
Actually, we didn't do 120 yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I heard him say 120. I apologize.
No problem.
I withdraw my comment.
No problem. Any additional comments from counselors? All right. Motion carries 24 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 120, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 120, 2019, reappoints Marilyn Feaster to the Early Intervention Planning Council. Mr. President, I'd like to withdraw that recommendation.
Very good, and thank you. The next item on our agenda is proposal 122. Forgive me, 125. Proposal number 125, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 125 approves the mayor's appointment of Mr. Paul Babcock as the director of the Office of Public Health and Safety. Mr. Babcock said that with council approval, he looks forward to working on some major projects, such as the Community Justice Campus and the Assessment and Intervention Center, and to help the citizens who need services to get back on their feet. Counselor Simpson moved, seconded by Counselor Fanning, to send proposal number 125 to the full council, with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of eight to one, with Counselor Scales casting the negative vote with concerns over a previous proposal. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors?
Mr. President.
Counselor Simpson.
I want to recognize Mr. Babcock for taking on a job that probably didn't have a title or didn't have a job description, and I just want to commend him for the excellent job he has done in a lot of things I asked of him, especially in the criminal justice system. As I tell people, that the criminal justice system is a reform system, and I think that he's definitely a key leader in making sure that criminal justice will be looking and helping the homeless and those in need and stuff like that. I think it's really, really important, and I'm honored to have him as a director, and I appreciate you very much, Mr. Babcock, and wish you have another good year. Thank you.
Mr. President, could he stand up so we wouldn't, those at home would know who he is?
Okay, Mr. Babcock.
I'm sorry.
If you'd like to stand, Director? If there are no additional comments, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to one. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 129, refer to Parks and Recreation Committee. Chairman Oliver.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, on March 14, the Parks and Recreation Committee met, and we voted unanimous to reappoint Mrs. Linda Bradford back to be the director of Parks and Recreation. I so move, Mr. President.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23. Motion carries 24 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 130, refer to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 130, 2019, approves of the mayor's appointment of Dan Parker as the director of the Department of Public Works. David Bride, DPW employee and spokesman for AFSMI, spoke in favor of Mr. Parker's reappointment and on behalf of the employees of the Department of Public Works. Counselor McHenry moved, seconded by Counselor Oliver, to send proposal 130 to the full council, with a due pass recommendation, and that motion carried by a vote of 10 to zero, and I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Counselor Jackson. Wait, just a moment. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, this is another, I know he's getting paid, he's an employee, but he sets the bar high when responding, I know, to counselors and to our needs in our districts. He provides equity to me. Equity, this is the first time in a long time from DPW under his leadership that I've seen the amount of equity spread across in our districts for, and recognizing that every district has residents that are taxpayers, that are citizens, and he helps get, he works with us to get the job done. So, thank you. He just responded to an email of mine. I sent it at 12:00 a.m., thinking he'll get it in the morning. He responded at 12:32 a.m. So, I just want to say thank you, Director Parker.
Very good. Counselor Clay.
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly would join in the course of those who are complimenting the director, however, since he is here tonight, and there is, I would imagine, within all our districts, some concern with regard to the pace and progress of these potholes. If he could just give us a quick update for our viewers to let them know that it remains a priority of his agency. As we shower him with these accolades, he can give us an update on these potholes.
Director Parker, would you come forward?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Clay, thank you for the question. So, we've been hard at it. It was because of the budget and the capital plan that this council passed in coordination with the mayor's administration that we were able to get on top of this problem quicker this year and with more flexibility than we did last year when we had to declare an emergency and have funds appropriated. So, we've been out since February 12 with hot asphalt and been able to tackle a good portion of the service requests that residents have put in on our major thoroughfares. We're down to about 30% of the remaining requests that are open are on major thoroughfares. The rest are in residential. We're trying to get the major thoroughfares done first. Last year, we did not get to residential streets until June 1. Our target is the middle of April this year to have major thoroughfares done and start tackling the ones that folks have responded to in residential areas. We obviously do the major thoroughfares first for public safety and make sure those are the streets that people are driving faster on, but because of the work of this council, we have more bodies to throw at this problem this year. We have more equipment, and we've had friends in our contracting community out strip patching in a lot of places. The Post Road one was very popular this weekend from several of you, and that was a road that obviously needed a lot... from several of you, and that was a road that obviously needed a lot of work. It wasn't just going to be patched one more time. It needed to be stripped down, and about four and a half inches of asphalt came off that road, and we've put so far down on Post Road about eighteen hundred tons of asphalt down on the road. So, the repairs are happening. The crews have only had one weekend off this entire winter season. They were back at it on this past Saturday. They had Sunday off, but they're going to be back at it again this Saturday, it looks like, with good weather. So, we're more people, more equipment, more asphalt, getting the job done.
Thank you, Director. It's good to hear you say in your own unique way that potholes near you are going to be filled in this city, and we appreciate not only your effort, but that of Mr. Hardeman and the staff, the competent staff that makes up DPW. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Counselor Cordy.
I just want to say thank you to Director Parker for all of his hard work. I kind of grew up in public works, and I would be remiss if I didn't tell him good job because he's one of the best, if not the best, so far. And I'd like to thank Director Broadfoot, and a special shout-out to Deputy Mayor Jeff Bennett.
Very good. All right. Since motions improperly moved and seconded, if there are no additional comments from councilors, we will proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-four to one. The next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 148, 2019, introduced by Counselor Osley, referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, confirms the mayor's appointment of John E. Hall as Executive Director of the Indianapolis Housing Authority. Proposal Number 149, 2019, introduced by Counselors Lewis and Jackson, referred to the Rules and Public Policy Committee, approves additional appropriations totaling $2,226,500 in the 2019 budget of the Department of Business and Neighborhood Services Consolidated County General Fund to support demolition costs associated with the Oak Tree apartment site, appropriate grant dollars from the Nina Mason-Puliam Charitable Trust to the Division of Animal Care Services for the Indy Cares Initiative, and support the purchase of equipping, the purchase and equipping of thirty vehicles to replace aged and higher-mileage vehicles in their fleet. Proposal Numbers 150 through 154 refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Proposal Number 150, 2019, introduced by Counselors Johnson and Cordy, approves and ratifies the declaratory resolution of the Metropolitan Development Commission for the Brookfield Road, Irvington Plaza Economic Development Area. Proposal Number 151, 2019, introduced by Counselor Adamson, approves and ratifies the declaratory resolution of the Metropolitan Development Commission to the North Plus East Block 20 and Park in North allocation areas. Proposal Number 152, 2019, introduced by Counselor Adamson, authorizes economic development tax increment revenue bonds not to exceed $7 million for projects in the Block 20 and Park in North allocation areas. Proposal Number 153, 2019, introduced by Counselor Lewis, approves and ratifies the declaratory resolution of the Metropolitan Development Commission for the International Marketplace Economic Development Area and Tax Increment Financing District. Proposal Number 154, 2019, introduced by Counselor Lewis, authorizes the issuance of $1,924,000 in tax increment bonds for costs in the 3,500 allocation area. Proposal Numbers 155 through 157 refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Proposal Number 155, 2019, introduced by Counsel Robinson, approves a transfer of $323,920 in the 2019 budget of the Marion County Forensic Services Agency Federal Grants Fund to purchase supplies and services for the crime lab. Proposal Number 156, 2019, introduced by Counsel Robinson, approves additional appropriations totaling $832,307 in the 2019 budget of the Marion County Community Corrections Agency State Grants Fund to purchase supplies, contractual services, and equipment. Proposal Number 157, 2019, introduced by Counselors Lewis, Osley, and Robinson, amends Chapter 283, Article II of the Code regarding the membership of the Marion County Criminal Justice Planning Council. Proposal Number 180, 2019, introduced by Counselor Osley, referred to the Rules and Public Policy Committee, provides a technical amendment to Section 292-1 of the Code relating to the defense and indemnification of employees to protect against potential challenge that Section 292-1 is inconsistent with Indiana Torque Claims Act. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Priority Business. Proposal Numbers 163 through 175 are all rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on March the 1st, 2019. If no counselor wishes to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration, the proposals will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? Seeing none, the proposals will pass into law. Proposal Numbers 176 through 179 are all rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on March the 8th, 2019. If no counselor wishes to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration, the proposals will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? All right, seeing none, the proposals will pass into law. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Public Hearing. Proposal Number 140, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson. That would be then Counselor Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 140 approves additional appropriations totaling $9,675,000 in the 2019 city non-departmental budget to be used as, at the closing of the Community Justice Campus bond to fund the debt stabilization account in an amount equal to one-quarter of the total annual debt service. Sarah Riordan, Executive Director Bond Bank, stated that last year the council approved the leases that would provide security for the issuance of bonds, which will be paid with property tax and income tax revenue to construct three facilities at the criminal justice campus. She said that they have obtained the approval of the Indianapolis Marion County Building Authority, IMCBA, which will be the lesaur and the approval from the Bond Bank Board of Directors for the actual issuance of the debt. Ms. Riordan said that one of the things that they did to develop the liquidity is to create a debt service reserve fund by taking one year's worth of bond payments into an account and hold it there, and that is funded by bond proceeds. Ms. Riordan said that they have been setting aside funds on a monthly basis that comes from the Citizens' Energy Pilot Bonds and the Stormwater Revenue and have been depositing the funds into the Community Justice Revenue Stability Fund. She said that the Bond Bank is asking the council to appropriate three months' worth of annual debt service to fund the special contingency fund. Counselor Simpson moved, seconded by Counselor Feaster, to send Proposal Number 140, 2019, to the full council with a due-pass recommendation with a vote of nine to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to Proposal 140? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-five to zero. There is no business under Special Orders unfinished business, so we will now proceed to Special Orders final adoption. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number Five, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take Proposals Number Five and Six together. Proposal Number Five approves an amendment to the declaratory resolution and redevelopment plan for the airport economic development area to include Emphasis Project and the Washington Street High School Road Gateway Redevelopment Project and to create the Emphasis Allocation Area within the airport economic development area. Proposal Number Six approves an amendment to the declaratory resolution and redevelopment plan for the West Washington Street Corridor Economic Development Area to include the Washington Street and High School Road Gateway Redevelopment Project and the Emphasis Limited Education Center Project and to create the Washington Street Gateway Allocation Area within, and that's a whole lot, within the West Washington Street Corridor Economic Development Area. Director Mack and Andy Mallon, Corporation Counsel Office, read through a PowerPoint presentation stating that Proposal Number Five and Six, 2019, are two separate proposals due to, due to two previously established economic redevelopment and allocation areas. Mr. Mallon stated that Emphasis, a U.S. Education and Innovation Center, will be located at the 132 acres of vacant land at the Indianapolis International Airport. The project will have an approximate investment of $245 million and is expected to create $3,000 in Indianapolis and Marion County. Director Mack stated that the Washington Street Gateway supports the redevelopment of a distressed commercial intersection located at West Washington Street and High School Road. Both projects have been identified as key development sites in the 2018 West Side Strategic Revitalization Plan, and both will support a multimodal connectivity through the blue line rapid transit. Counselor Holliday moved and seconded by Counselor Adamson to send Proposals Number Five and Six to the full council with a due-pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of ten to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? Seeing none, we will proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-five to zero. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 115, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 115 approves a statement of benefits for AMPG, an applicant of tax abatement for property located in an economic revitalization area. Alexis Sauter, project manager of KSM Location Advisors, and Matt Goldbrun, founder and president of AMPG, read through a PowerPoint presentation. AMPG is anticipating adding new equipment to its in-house manufacturing operation as they have, as they take on new project lines and customers. The project estimate a $9.5 million investment, which will create fifteen new jobs. Counselor Adamson moved and seconded by Counselor Robinson to send Proposal Number 115 to the full council with a due-pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of ten to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors?
Mr. President.
Counselor Simpson.
Where is this location at? It doesn't say exactly revitalization area. What area is this in?
Very good. Chairwoman Lewis.
It's in, I'm sorry, it's in Pike, but give me a second. Is it Counselor Robinson? Is it, I believe it's in Counselor Robinson's district.
Are you good? Okay, very good.
I can find the exact address if there's no one here from, oh, is he good? Okay.
Any additional comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-four to one. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 116, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 116 approves the statement of benefits of Eli Lilly and Company, an applicant for tax abatement for real and personal property located in an economic revitalization area. Mr. Michael Connor and Dr. Foley, Eli Lilly and Company gave a PowerPoint presentation. Eli Lilly and Company plans to make, to make ninety-one million capital investment in both real and personal property primarily at Lilly Technology Center, excuse me, South Investments, represents projects designed to deliver capacity for insulin products and ensure their assets keep them competitive. Counselor Jackson moved and seconded by Counselor Fanning to send Proposal Number 116 to the full council with a due-pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of nine to one. Counselor Adamson casting the negative vote. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries. Motion carries nineteen to six. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 128, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman. Counsel Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand why you might be confused. Proposal Number 128 approves a master lease purchase agreement to obtain fire apparatus trucks and other related matters. Don Sykes, Randall, Chief Financial Officer, Indianapolis Fire Department, stated that IFD is requesting approval to proceed to the financing to support the purchase of twelve new fire apparatus. If approved, the lease purchase would be subject to twelve semi-annual payments that are funded within the existing fire cumulative fund. Ms. Randall said that in, in a, that it is a six-year term, and they will be making payments twice per year, and will own the twelve vehicles for $7.3 million. Brian Weishardt, Battalion Chief of Supportive Services, IFD, stated that they are receiving six pumppers, three ladders, one tactical unit, a TSU, which handles their air supply, and one air-supply trailer. Counselor Simpson asked if the lease is coming through the Indianapolis Bond Bank. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, why? Ms. Randall said that they have been working with the Bond Bank, but the lease is through the PNC Equipment Finance. Counselor Simpson moved, seconded by Counselor Oliver, to send Proposal Number 128, 2019, to the full council with a due-pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of nine to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Counselor Gray.
I'd like to ask the Fire Chief, why there's no engines involved in this purchase? Being an old engine man, you know, I'd like to see some new engines.
You say why there's no engine? Yeah, there's six pumppers and engines.
Chief Malone, please come forward.
Yes, sir. What's the question, Counselor?
Why there's no engines? I didn't hear you mention any engines.
Yeah, there's six, six engines, three ladders, a tactical unit, a TSU, and an air-supply unit. So, six pumppers, six engines are included in this purchase.
Okay, they didn't, they mentioned the pumppers, but they didn't mention the engines. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Motion carries twenty-four. Motion carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 131, refer to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposals number 131, 132, and 134 together.
Consent.
Thank you. Proposal number 131 authorizes parking restrictions on 17th Street near the Monon Trail in District 17. Proposal number 132 authorizes intersection controls at Christie Court and Murray Street in District 20. And proposal number 134 authorizes intersection controls at College Avenue and 9th Street and parking restrictions on College and Belfontaine in District 17. Counselor Gray moved to amend proposal 134, and that amendment passed by a vote of 10 to 0. And Counselor Coats moved, seconded by Counselor Oliver, that to send proposals number 131, 132, and 134 as amended to the full council with a due pass recommendation, and that motion carried by a vote of 10 to 0. An iso move.
Second.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 133, refer to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 133, which authorized speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour and weight restrictions in the Devonshire subdivision in District 20, in District 3, was a redundant proposal that had been passed previously by the council at another meeting. So, it was moved and seconded by Counselor Oliver to strike proposal number 133, and that motion carried by a vote of 10 to 0. An iso move.
Second.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 25 to 0. There is no business under special service district councils. There is no business under new business. The next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournment. Counselor McHenry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to give a huge thanks to all the volunteers who came out on St. Patrick's Day to do a cleanup lawn dandy trail. That was an area that needed some little TLC, and I appreciate that. I know we're getting ready to go into the great Indy cleanups in April, and I want to give a couple of cleanups that are coming up. One is our annual cleanup on the Causeway West on 56th Street to Raceway Road. That's Eagle Creek Park manager Brittany Davis and I do that every year. It's on Saturday, April 6th, from 9:00 to noon, and we'll be meeting at the park office. And there was another area that is really in need on 34th Street, and one of my constituents, well, it's not one of my constituents, is Alaya lives close to 34th, is having a, organizing a cleanup on Saturday, April the 13th, beginning at 9:00 a.m., a meeting at the corner of 34th Street and Bayhead Drive. And she's also a block captain for KIB. I'd like to encourage more people to get involved with KIB. I know Counselor Adamson's very much involved. And I also saw today coming down, someone picking up trash, putting it in a grocery sack, had a full grocery sack. If everybody did that when they were out walking, we wouldn't now have the trash problem we do today. So, I'd like to encourage people, when you're out walking, take a grocery bag with you, fill it up with trash, take it home. And if everybody in the city would do that, we would have a much cleaner, more attractive city.
Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselors, if I could have your attention for just a moment. At the conclusion of this meeting, after we finish, if everybody would stay for just a minute, we haven't taken a group picture this year. We'd like to get a picture of all 25 of us together. It'll just take a minute after we conclude. If you wouldn't run off, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
No additional comments. The doctored agenda for this meeting of council having been completed. The chair will now entertain motions.
Mr. President.
For adjournment. Chair recognizes Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment. By all counselors in memory of Senator Birch Evans Bye Jr., by Counselor Osley in memory of Cecil Sinkfield, by Counselor Jackson in memory of Dorothy Whitehurst, by Counselor Westler in memory of Thomas L. Spangler, by Counselor Lewis in memory of Paul Bateman Sr., by Counselor Corte in memory of Patricia Resch, John Miller, Betty Jean Tender Bruce, and Emma Eileen McAfee, by Counselor Feaster in memory of William Buddy Cole, by Counselor McQuillan in memory of Mary Ellen Siles, Timothy Tim Warren Kelly, Dee Bruce Rediger, Fred Simon, Karen Elizabeth Duchess, and Detective Sergeant Jason S. Swanson, by Counselors Corte, Feaster, Westler, and Adamson in memory of Lisa Zoor, by Counselor McHenry in memory of Patricia Pope and William Kirkman. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons that I've here specifically named. I respectfully ask the support of fellow counselors. I further request that the motion be made a part of the permanent record of this body and that a letter bearing the council seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advised in this action.
Thank you, Counselor McQuillan. Hearing no objections, the motion is received, and the requests are so ordered. Hearing no further motions, we are adjourned.